Last night it was pretty rainy, but other than that it's been great. A little hotter than typical for this time of year.
For the good of the audience Supervisor Ang is in Yankton, South Dakota. I mean for Asia she's in China.
Small Chinese city of Shanghai with almost 30 million people.
Have you met anyone taller than yourself there?
Only on billboards of Yao Ming.
He was at the other one. I was at the one with the peanuts. I was at the other machine. Lot of change obviously.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you join me in a moment of silence this week especially fitting in honor of those in law enforcement who have given their lives? Thank you very much. Thank you for being at tonight's meeting. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you'd silence it we would very much appreciate it. And the first item on our agenda tonight relates to citizen concerns. If there are any concerned citizens who would like to approach the board on any matter that is not on the agenda now would be the time. We would like to hear from you. Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda dated May 23, 2017. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second by Supervisor Potabam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Items three through 10 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Those items will pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a board member. I'll read them at this time. Item three is approval of the minutes of the May 16, 2017 meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five, our County Treasurer Mike Clayton is approval of a resolution for a tax abatement for long lines wireless. And item B, approval of resolution for a tax abatement for an individual with the initials G S. Item six, our Board Administration Karen James is approval of a resolution for tax suspension for an individual with the initials C R. Item seven, Human Resources Director Ed Gilliland, approval of the memorandum of personnel transaction. Item eight, Board Administration, our Budget Analyst Dennis Butler, and there is a host of these, items A through E, and I'll read them. Is an approval of a resolution fixing Tuesday, June 6, 2017 at 4:45 PM for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $900,000 in general obligation capital loan notes of Woodbury County, State of Iowa for essential accounting purposes and providing publication of notice thereof. Item B, approval of a resolution fixing Tuesday, June 6, 2017 at 4:48 PM for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $850,000 general obligation capital loan notes of Woodbury County, State of Iowa for essential accounting purposes and providing for publication notice thereof. C, approval of resolution fixing Tuesday, June 6, 2017 at 4:51 PM for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $1.1 million general obligation capital loan notes of Woodbury County, State of Iowa and providing for publication of notice thereof. Item D, approval of resolution fixing Tuesday, June 6, 2017 at 4:54 PM for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $1.1 million general obligation capital loan notes of Woodbury County, State of Iowa and providing for publication of notice thereof. And E, approval of a resolution fixing Tuesday, June 6, 2017 at 4:57 PM for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation capital loan notes of Woodbury County, State of Iowa and providing for publication of notice thereof. Now Dennis, for everybody in the listening public and for the good of the audience, can you just tell us what we heard in items A through E so that people aren't worried about all of those figures, dollars, and numbers?
Right. What this does, because of the $1.2 million limitation on projects, we are borrowing as one lump sum $4,717,040, but we have to break these up into separate projects as we're doing for each hearing here. Just stay below the 1.2 million. Each project is related to courthouse intake and several other projects throughout the county here. It's our CIP. So even though they appear, when we have separate hearings, we actually had bid these out through hearings and through bidding.
Dennis, you said courthouse intake. Did you mean jail intake?
Jail intake.
Thank you.
Courthouse projects, jail intake, and there are several others here that we have.
And will each of those separate public hearings denote what dollars will go to which projects?
Yes.
Would that be an expectation that I'd have if I wanted to come at a certain time and let the board know my support or my dissent?
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Any questions or discussion on that? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just wanted everybody to know because that was a rapid reading.
And one item is, we had estimated 3%. It's coming in at 1.99 if we go ahead with the loan. So we're saving 1%.
And that's good news.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item nine, Secondary Roads, our County Engineer Mark Nara. This is consideration of a permit to work in the right of way for Jeff Nack and to direct the chairman to sign the permits. And item 10, Conservation, Rick Schneider, the approval of a resolution for the notice of property sale, survey number 5248, setting the public hearing and sale for Tuesday, June 6 at 4:35 PM. That's the end of the consent agenda.
I'll move it.
Second.
Supervisor Radig moves the consent agenda and Supervisor DeWitt, seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero, which brings us fortuitously to a 4:35 PM set time under Board Administration, our Public bidder Heather Satterwhite. And item A is a public hearing of sale of property parcel numbers which is listed in the agenda and also known as 3101, 13th Street. So we are now in a public hearing for or against the sale of this property. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this property being sold before we get to the actual bidding? In that case, I'll take a motion if someone would like to close it.
Also move to close the hearing.
Supervisor Potabam still moves.
Second.
And Supervisor DeWitt, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. We are now ready to open the sale of this property if anybody would like to bid on 3101, 13th Street. Yes, sir. If you'd state your name and address for us.
My name is Dustin Berg. My address is 3012, 14th Street.
Dustin Berg?
Yep.
And what would you like to bid, sir?
I'd like to bid the 133.
And the minimum's 131. You want to bid 131?
Yes.
131. Is there anyone else who would like to bid on this property?
I told Heather before the meeting, I thought, boy, this would be a good chance to buy a big piece of ground pretty cheap, but you guys did all the work to bring it here. Maybe I won't bid.
Are there associated fees with that?
The 131, including the cost of services.
Okay. So hearing none, I would move that the property be sold to Mr. Berg in the amount of $131, including the cost of services.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, sir. And Ms. Satterwhite will help you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Item B, we're right on time, is a public hearing of sale of the property parcel that's listed in your agenda that's also known as 1104 West 23rd Street. This is now a public hearing on the sale of this property. So if there's anybody who would like to speak for or against selling this particular piece of property, please come forward at this time. Hearing none, I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
A motion and a second. Supervisor DeWitt, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Now, is there anyone who would like to bid on this particular property? And again, this is 1104 West 23rd Street, sir. If you'd come up to the podium, state your name and address, please, and what your bid is.
Yes, hello. My name is Fernando Rosas, and I'm the son of Fernando Rosas. He would like to purchase his property for the minimum bid of $169.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to bid on this particular piece of property? If you'd come up to the podium, sir, state your name and address and what your bid is as well.
My name is Michael Domassie.
Domassie?
Domassie. D-O-M-A-S-S-E. 1401 West Street. My bid will be $200.
Thank you very much, sir. We will now entertain any bids that would be higher than $200. You could increase it by a dollar. I mean, it really is anything at 201?
Yes.
All right, 201?
250.
250?
300?
400?
You got it.
Okay. I would move that the property in question be sold to Mr. Fernando Rosas. Is the name right? For $400?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Satterwhite there will see and help you afterwards. Thank you also for being here, sir. Having dispensed with the consent agenda as well as item 11, we are now to item 12, Planning and Zoning Director John Palolo. And item A is a public hearing to approve the third reading and adoption of ordinance number 44 regarding a zoning ordinance mapping amendment for lots 1 through 5 and Outlot A of Whiskey Acres addition. Evening, John.
Good evening, Supervisors. By now, I'm sure you're fairly familiar with this agenda item as well as the next two. We are before you today for the third and final reading and then to approve ordinance number 44. The first agenda items related to a subdivision that was done previously and approved by your board for the Frank and Foster families. Basically, we're adjusting the zoning to meet the residential density requirement created by the subdivision. I'm asking you that the zoning be changed from ag preservation to ag estate to allow that density. Our approval process is threefold this evening. To hold a public hearing, close that hearing, then a motion to approve the third reading, then finally a motion to adopt the resolution.
Thank you very much. Before you go on, John, is there anybody who's interested in this particular issue right now? I want to ask that question because we're going to go very quickly, but if there were people, we would not be going quickly.
Okay.
So we are now in a public hearing regarding this matter. Hearing no one who's interested in speaking about it, I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. I'd move to approve the third reading of zoning ordinance number 44, a zoning ordinance mapping amendment for rezoning lots 1 through 5 and Outlot A, Whiskey Acres addition to AE.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. I would move to adopt zoning ordinance number 44, a zoning ordinance mapping amendment for rezoning lots 1 through 5 and Outlot A of Whiskey Creek, not Whiskey Creek, Whiskey Acres addition to AE.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. We will now move on to the next one.
The next agenda item is the rezoning of lot 1 of RJ addition for the Rodney and Jody Lieber family. This zoning occurs because of the split of the parcel, and there were different uses previously approved and zoned for different sectors of the parcel. The lot 1, we're requesting the light industrial plan development zoning designation be changed to just light industrial. If you recall, this is the location of the Lieber family businesses.
So we're going to held a public hearing at this time?
It'll be the same process. Hold a public hearing, approve the third reading, and then approve the ordinance.
We are now in a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against? Hearing none, I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the public hearing is closed on a vote of five to zero. At this time, I'd move to approve the third reading and adoption of ordinance number 44, a zoning ordinance mapping amendment for lot 1 of RJ addition.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. And our third motion will be a motion to adopt zoning ordinance number 44, zoning ordinance mapping amendment for lot 1 of RJ addition. Do I have that right, John?
That's correct. They're all the same ordinance number.
And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. A motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. Finally, we are in our third and final public hearing for this evening, and that public hearing...
Is for the Greg family. This is the other lot within the RJ addition. It's rezoning that parcel for its residential use. It was previously light industrial PD, and it now will become ag reservation.
And very appreciative of the process if someone would want to have spoken, but hearing no one, I would, first off, I would hold the public hearing, which we are now in, and then if anybody would like to come forward, hearing no one, I'll move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Now I'll move to approve the third reading of zoning ordinance number 44 in regards to a zoning ordinance mapping amendment for lot 2 of RJ addition.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. And finally, I'd move to adopt zoning ordinance number 44, zoning ordinance mapping for rezoning and adoption of ordinance number 44 for lot, an amendment for lot 2 of RJ addition.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero.
I have two copies of ordinance number 44 that requires each Supervisor's signature.
Thank you very much for your work on that, John.
Rocky's going to pass it to you.
What? All right. We are now to item 13, Secondary Roads, our County Engineer Mark Nara. And item A is to receive bids for the Bridger Placement Project number LBW 10773-97. Evening, Mark.
Good evening. This is Colin Ryan, our new engineer intern.
Aye.
He'll be helping me with the bids tonight. Periodically, you'll see him around when Ben or I might not be available for a board meeting, so.
Mind telling us a little bit about yourself? Hate to put you on the spot, but...
That's fine. I'm originally from Webster City, Iowa, over by Fort Dodge, for those not too familiar. I did five years at Iowa State. I graduated with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and an MBA as well, and also a minor in agricultural business.
Wow. Great. Well, thanks for bringing all that to the table over here in Woodbury County. Appreciate it.
Evidently qualified for county engineering.
Yeah.
That was a unique background among us, so we were very pleased to get him.
Great. Thanks so much.
I have bid tabulations for the board. Our next bid is from Dixon Construction of Correctionville, Iowa. DOT bid bond is included. Our final bid is from Graves Construction of Spencer, Iowa. Bid bond is included. Total bid price, $437,110.28. 437-110-28. I would request the board receive the bids and return them to the county engineer's office for review.
I move to receive the bids and return them for review.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there discussion? So, Mark, what are you looking for when you, if you got about a $3,000?
We want to be sure that there's no errors in any of their tabulations.
Okay.
This...
But everything else is pretty much, if everything on paper's on paper, it's the low one that wins, is it?
Yes.
Well, unless there's an unbalanced bid.
Right. There's a couple of things that would possibly disqualify a bid. One is an improper bond. One's an unbalanced bid. Typically, we go with a low bidder, and it's not an issue. But we want to be sure when you've got a couple of them that are $3,000 apart, there could be a line item error in the way they carried out a number. That's close enough, within less than 1%, where we want to be sure that everything is correct on their math.
Very good.
It is obvious, and we will report to any contractors who call us tomorrow that Graves Construction was red low.
Okay. Very good.
But again, there's 24 line items on the bid. We want to be sure that they didn't make an error. We have seen errors on bids before. That's why we, if we don't take them home and review them, if it's a fast timetable, we'll ask the board for a recess from our department's work. We'll go up and run them through here and then make a very quick turnaround. In this case, that's not necessary.
Okay. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item B is to award a quota for a Tana Maxel dump truck for the Secondary Road Department.
This turned out to be easier than I expected when I was looking at 12 bids last week. I thought it might take some time to go through them all. But our recommendation was actually the low bid. They fully met specification. We recommend award to Boyer Trucks of Sioux Falls, South Dakota for a 2018 Western Star 4700 SB.
I'll move their recommendation.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. C is to award a quote for one extended cab 3/4 ton pickup truck for the Secondary Road Department.
We recommend award of the bid to Kneffler Chevrolet for $32,700.
I'll move their recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. D is to award a quote for one regular cab 3/4 ton pickup truck for the Secondary Road Department.
We recommend award of the bid to Berry Motor Company of Danbury, Iowa for $23,131.
I'll move their recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. E is to award quotes for two new motor graders for the Secondary Road Department.
After having analyzed the bids, we recommend award of the bids to Murphy Tractor for both machines, one for $242,400, the other for $252,900.
I'll move their recommendation.
Second.
Recognize Supervisor DeWitt a second in that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. F is to consider approval of contract and bond for project number BRO S CO 971295F97.
This project is with Godverson Smith Construction Company to install a new bridge on Union Avenue south of Cushing. Total bid price, $399,363.90. We recommend award.
I'll move it.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Is there discussion on this particular item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries on a vote count of five to zero.
That is the balance of our report for today.
All right. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Can we get these signed to you after?
Pardon me?
Can we get these signed to you after? Do you need them right now?
I can wait till after the meeting. Um, I can wait till after the meeting.
Item fourteen, Human Resources Director, Ed Gilliland. This is approval to establish a practice of refunding the employee contributions sent to Ipers for all covered employees who leave the county prior to six months' employment.
Essentially, what happens is if an employee is with us for less than six months, it was intended to be long-term. So if they're intended to be long-term, that means that Ipers withdrawals start immediately. And those contributions are made to Ipers, and the employees also had their contributions made to Ipers. We're recommending that the county refund those, and we apply for the refund to Ipers. Ipers will only refund it to us if we've refunded it to them. And then, so, we essentially get.
Or the pass through.
Typical case, nine point nine percent back that we've re, that we've paid in. And they're, they get their approximately five percent.
And Michelle explained what the practice is going to be.
Just to give a little bit of background of how this came about, is Ipers sent us a letter on an employee who had been hired as a permanent employee and who was terminated or terminated theirselves prior to six months. So they invite us, advised us as the employer that we do have the option to ask them for an adjustment in which they will refund both the employee and the employer portion of Ipers. In this case, it will be our responsibility to refund that employee and to take the proper taxes out of the Ipers. Um, the current practice is that we just let it ride, so the employer portion stays with Ipers. The employer continues to earn that quarter or that half a year of service with Ipers. And the employee, when they are terminated, have the option to withdraw their portion from Ipers. If they withdraw their portion from Ipers, they bring a form into the auditor's office, which we sign off on, which gives Ipers the authority to give them their refund. That puts the burden of the, the tax portion on the employee who takes that money from Ipers. If we choose to withdraw our portion and the employee portion as a procedure, then the burden would be upon us to make sure that those proper taxes, the federal and state, are taken out of that employee portion when they are refunded. I've looked at the history, and we've had three employees since I've started in the last ten months who have came in and requested to have their Ipers portion returned to them. And those employees were all of service longer than six months, so they would not be eligible for this. Um, and this would only affect the permanent employees, which could be part-time or full-time employees who are terminated within the first six months of employment.
So are you making a recommendation that would be otherwise on what's before us, essentially, or just putting forth a couple of options that would be before the board? Is that a good way of?
Well, I just want you to be aware of the history. I do think that the number of employees, in my understanding, that actually are terminated within the first six months is very small. So it's gonna put a, an additional task upon our office that's already, you know, low staff to make sure that we monitor and do this. I called our representative with Ipers, and he said that they send a letter out to us every time that an employee is terminated within the first six months. And we've only had one individual within the last ten months that we've received a letter from Ipers. Now, I haven't looked into our own records to determine if that's accurate or not, if what we're getting from Ipers is matching with what our records show. But I know that within the last month, we've had two individuals who were a very, very short term with the county, which would have been a very, very small amount, but nonetheless, they would be within this qualification.
So that would make it approximately three employees in the last six months, which is high. So, it's not a, it's not a common thing that we hire somebody on a permanent basis that leaves. Does have to be.
I think it may be worthwhile to look a little bit more into it, to see how many employees actually would qualify and what the financial amount would be gained in this amount. Some employees may think that it is a benefit to leave the money in Ipers. Some employees think that it's, you know, that they want their money back. That's, that's their choice. But the, the thing that we're throwing into the mix here is the option for the employer to take it back. And in that case, then we do have to change our procedures that we're doing right now.
So is it a fair statement to say that it's a little more onerous for us? It's another task that's being put on us, but it's to our advantage to make sure that we're getting that portion refunded? Is that?
From a financial perspective, if we, please correct me if I, if I misunderstood this, but from a financial perspective, if that employee leaves anytime prior to the six months, if we give them their money back, we can request that same thing from the states. We get our portion back. It gives us nine point nine percent of the wage that was paid to them back. And if that is not done at that time, as I understand it, they are, have no obligation to refund our portion, so we're out the nine point nine percent. And the other piece of it is, and this, this is worth discussing, I think, very much, is if you've got somebody who tends to be employed in the Ipers employment, I guess would be the right way to word it, potentially those dollars could go into their retirement and could be there for them, so maybe they would like to leave it there. But if they're just hired on a temporary basis, or if this was the only Ipers employment they had, it's money that they would never see come back anyway. It would never do them any good to have it in the Ipers account. They'd never be able to.
But they do have, go ahead.
They do have the choice when they are terminated to bring that money back to theirselves. I mean, they, they can fill out the form. It's, it's not an obstacle for them to receive their money back.
But my question was gonna be, if they decide to, say they're leaving here to go to another Ipers job, that's strictly their decision. Let it in, their, ours stays in, and it just goes with them.
If you don't take.
Yeah, if he doesn't, if the employee doesn't take it out.
Right. That's it. We're just trying to explain that. We didn't want to make this call. This is the board supervisor because it's financial. But you do have to consider those employees. Because if they're gone within the six months, they have to, in order for them to take that money back and the Ipers contribution, they have to get our permission. And we have to, to sign that, right?
Yes, that's correct. We sign a form, and what Ipers advise is upon termination, if we choose to do so, we can, we would initiate the refund from Ipers to the employer and the employee. If we leave it up to the employee, they have the option to initiate it. But we can refuse to sign that form if they've been here less than six months, because we have a procedure in place if we do.
But if we leave it, if we don't request it, and it's there for a year, they no longer have to request from us to make that withdrawal from Ipers, then they can do that on their own. So we just wanted to make sure that you understood all the options.
And help me with one, one piece, Pat, this is all as well as a two piece.
Michelle.
And Michelle, as I understand, if, if that person is here, let's just make it January to December for the time that they started, and they quit in June. They start January first, they quit in June. They've contributed to Ipers, and we've contributed to Ipers on their behalf. If they just leave that money in there for a year and walk away from it, we would not get our portion back. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have to, we have to act upon their termination if we're gonna implement this as a procedure. If the employee comes in and chooses that they, they want to take their money out, and we sign the form and allow them to do that, we no longer have the right to any of our employer contribution. That just stays in Ipers.
Well, we do have a right to it, right, if it's before the six months. Is that?
Only if we have initiated it and we have not signed a form for that employee already. We sign a form for the employee, authorizing them to get their share back, the employer no longer has any rights to their money regardless of how long they have been employed.
So, and I believe the only way we get our money back is if it's an immediate transaction. We refund to the employee, and we request from the state to, which credit to our.
How soon would that take place, Michelle?
I, I'll have to check for the specifics. The letter says you must process the adjustments immediately after entering termination dates and last paid dates, which, which we do on a quarterly basis, but I'll have to check with our representative to verify that.
And it has not been referenced to be that.
It has not. This has not been done in the past. And I've looked, I looked through last year's files, so within the last two years, I only found one filed document where an employee had asked to have their employee portion refunded, and that employee had been employed for four years, so they would not be eligible. And like I said, since I've started, I've had three of them, and they have been here. One of them wouldn't, was temporary, so that wouldn't apply. And one of them was here for a year, so that wouldn't apply. I can't speak on the third one. I'm not sure about it.
That's fairly few and far between, it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay. Well, what is the pleasure of the board? Let me ask it that way.
Quick question, Chairman, and for Michelle.
Yes.
I thought there used to be the ability for the county to set a minimum amount of money in the fund, so that if they terminated, and there wasn't that much money there, it could be an automatic refund if they questioned. They can transfer it to the fund, so it could stay tax-free or whatever the case might be. Or if it's delivered back to the employee, it's taxed at that point. Do we have that built up?
I think we're talking about different things. I could be wrong.
We're talking about actors, though.
We're talking about Ipers, but I think that's something else.
Different situation.
You're not talking about the employee contribution to Ipers?
No, we're talking about the employee contributions, but they go in, if it's, I'm sorry, my laptop's not working, but if they, if they're hired on a permanent basis, we start from day one to withhold it for this. And it goes in every period that you report Ipers.
Yeah, we report quarterly, or we, I'm sorry, we report monthly. I was mistaken. We report monthly, so at the end, at the beginning of the next month, we would be reporting which employees were terminated, their termination date, and their last check date, which all is included in the equation of how many quarterly years of service they have and everything with Ipers.
And what, to address what PG said, I think I understand the question he's asking. Let's take that, this can get kind of mucky, so let's start with that person that starts January first and quits in June. Obviously, they could be refunding appropriately, but you could take, if you took that check, if that, that person was given that check, they could actually take that entire amount, as I understand it. They could take that, this is kind of separate from what we're talking about, but they could take that and they could have that placed into another qualified, if we're talking about type of account. Right. And there would be no tax consequence.
Right. But what I'm saying is, we're talking about having to enact some type of request on behalf of the county, so that we can get our money back, or our employee contribution.
That, that is the Ipers requirement, is I was, what you were referring to, I haven't, I'm not familiar with that at all.
I think you're talking about deferred accounts.
No, I'm talking about the Ipers, but what I'm saying is, you have a lot of institutions that will set a minimum amount of contributions, whether they're there for six months or longer, that if that minimum standard isn't high enough, it would be an automatic refund, refunded back. That way, the county doesn't have to pay attention to that six month or that immediacy. It can already be a policy.
You can check into that, and I would have the option like that.
It, it, it seems to me that Ipers pretty much controls this, this whole system, so it would be something that they would have influence as opposed to us being requesting.
I just want to throw it out there, because I know a lot of institutions will do it automatic, especially in six months. There's not gonna be that much money.
Can I, can I ask a silly, simple question? So what would be the downside if we said, we are going to just establish that we're gonna refund the money that this person had worked for thirty-five days and was terminated? And we're going to, I, I know to, from the employee's perspective, they may say, well, I wanted to do something different with that, but it's not a whole lot. And am I, am I misunderstanding this?
It's a, it's a quarter to Ipers of contribution. That's what the employees will be concerned about. To you, that's, that's your opportunity, because you're determining whether or not we continue with the current practice, is that we leave up to the employee to make that determination. They contact us right away if they want to take it right away, and then we've been signing off on it, I think, that we've allowed them to, to take that.
So you're saying, Pat, it's not about the dollars in a sense, it's about that person wants this quarter to count in years of service, so that they can make this certain. And by refunding the money, even though it was, you know, thirty-five days, or so to speak, that's irrelevant to the person. They're counting on the years of service, but once we've refunded that, we've obviated the counting of the quarter. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. I'm starting to catch up.
Yeah, and that's what, that's why it's such a new folks debate, is to determine.
So we forfeit the money that we have contributed for that said thirty-five days?
That's what we have in the, that's what we have, is that money goes into Ipers and it just stays.
For example, how much money is that in that thirty-five days on the county share? For example, I mean, on a.
Well, it depends on.
I mean, it's still county money, I guess.
Your employer's share is eight point nine three percent for the majority, which is the regular class, is what the county contributes. So it depends on what the employee makes, you know, what department they're in. Uh, shares is nine point six three.
Six months, you could actually, three quarters. They could, they could have contributed in March, as an example, if it started in March first. They could contribute in March, they would contribute in which the first quarter. It'd obviously be contributing in the second quarter, they were there five months, and then the fifth month would be July, which would be your third quarter.
Yes.
So they could potentially attain three quarters of contribution. If you've got an employee who's at an annual salary of about forty thousand dollars, and in that time period, they made approximately twenty thousand, make it easy numbers for me. Nine percent, about eighteen hundred dollars, would be potentially what we'd be talking about, county dollars.
Is there any way to figure out? I always like to look at the cost benefit of, you know, what are we talking about in terms of in a year, in two or five years? What we'd be actually going out after? I don't like just sort of leaving the, the money out there, so to speak. But if it's a very, very small pittance in comparison, I mean, there is some, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to weigh this decision based on how much are we really talking about? If that makes sense?
Kind of worst-case scenarios, you're talking, I would say, in the calendar year, if you've got three or four people that fall into this category, which it sounds like that's all we're doing potentially, maybe not even that. You're talking two to five thousand dollars, kind of worst-case scenario. Would that kind of fit?
I, I really can't speak to it, but I do think it is worthwhile to actually look at the stats of employees who have been terminated within six months and looking at what they say and what the numbers work out to be. I mean, we have all the information in the computers, we just.
I guess it's something that employees, three out of the four temporary people that we look at, they want, they were wishing we could continue to do it the way that we have. So it is a value to.
If they could, yeah, if they can, if they can obtain service, and they can have something in retirement from this.
But this is also employees that are leaving.
Short-term employees leaving us.
Right, yeah.
On good terms?
She kept using the word terminated, that.
Right, that's what, yeah.
That's what I kept hearing.
So when you say terminated, that's what's happened in this situation, or they've terminated their employment or?
Terminated to be anything. They could have been terminated by an employer, they could have quit on their own. Terminated in our folks means.
Yeah, yeah, okay, gotcha.
We just have a couple of companies, you know, help that, just, but after a short period, just a few days, just a, 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 but some do stay on.
Is there a downside to doing this? That's, so we'd be getting the reimbursement from the state, would we not?
There's no, there's no downside for the county at all to doing this, other than the extra work that Michelle and her staff have had. The downside is whether the employee continues to accrue service or not with Ipers.
Whether you're at six months or less.
Yes, and you're less than six months. You, best side for the employee is you've got three quarters. More typical is you maybe had a quarter of, of extra Ipers time.
So I guess the only downside would be somebody who worked for five months, and it was an amicable relationship, but it just wasn't for them. They'll lose, they won't be able to realize one, if not almost two quarters.
You're saying you're something that has Ipers, you have, that would, that's exactly.
Yeah, but they also know the policy coming in then, so they could choose to work here for seven months and then leave.
And then, then our hands are tied. Their contribution says to the state, as I understand, is that correct, Pat?
Yeah, that's correct.
So then, I'm just saying, it's the employee's choice at that point to leave at six months, so it's their choice whether or not they want to keep that.
Many pensions, you give up whatever vesting you have if you aren't there a given percentage of time. Even your most liberal...
Hey, my company's like five years.
Yeah, and they probably, they probably earn 20% in a year. So first year if you leave, you get none of the employer contribution. Second year if you left, you get 20%, third year, fourth. Ipers typically are, unless you're in this unique situation, unless you go to another employer, you have to have been there seven years or until age 65 at this point.
Supervisor Potabom?
So, the only difference is here from what we're doing now is it would be our call, not the employees'. So they wouldn't have the option if we, if they only stayed four months and we did this. They don't have, they can't say, well, wait a minute, I want to leave it in there. We would be making the decision, because it has to be made on your next reporting.
Yes.
And we would get our money back.
Right, yes.
What are your thoughts, Supervisor Potabom?
I, to me...
I mean, you've got some background in pensions and...
Well, for the police and fire pension, you have to have four years before you can accrue anything anyway. So, I mean, to me, I started this thing out thinking it was a no-brainer, that, yeah, we would do it this way. Then it got all muddled up, and now I'm back to where I think it's a no-brainer, we would do it this way.
That's why I wrote it the way I did, because I think you could really muddle this up and really get money.
And yet, it's a little more work, but you have to report anyway. So the only difference would be your next reporting, you give them a check for their contributions, and we get it back then from Ipers.
And at the end of the year, reporting, it will affect some of that.
But what I'm...
To echo...
Supervisor On?
Echo Supervisor Potabom's statement is interesting, that, you know, as a recommendation from Mr. Gill, and we're, you know, talking about a worst-case scenario, normally you don't talk about a worst-case scenario with a recommendation. So, I'm not sure of the utility of this.
Well, if we use it four times a year, we've got it on the books as a policy, and it's used, and we get our 9% back.
Well, there seems like there's agreement from this side of the table, and if these two are agreeing that there's momentum that's building, I'm just, I'm looking for the pleasure of the board.
I'm thinking that it's county money, and if we've got the opportunity to get it back, it's county money. You know, if the, I mean, I, yeah, it's all fine and good to stay in good graces with an employee that leaves amicably, but that's not our, that's not our... It's not our onus to make former employees happy, once they leave the employ of the county, and maintain their retirement, so that they can build their quarter someplace else. I mean, granted, it's, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I do believe that it's county's money, and if we got a chance to get it back, we should.
All right, I'll move it.
Second. Motion by Supervisor Raddick, second by Supervisor Potabom. Is there any other discussion? I'll just say, I didn't understand this to start, and muddling through it, I feel like I understand it now. So I do think that it was worth the...
You think you understand it, but don't ask you to explain it?
Right.
Okay.
I will ask the gentleman to my right and everybody else's left. So with that, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. Thank you both for your work on this and for elucidating it. Item 15, Board of Supervisors, as myself, Board Administration, Dennis Butler. This is approval of allocation of gaming revenues to the Historical Committee for the celebration of the 100th anniversary of the Woodbury County Courthouse. Just for the good of the public, we did have a courthouse foundation meeting today that allocated, up to $10,000 was the motion, and that's pretty much the fund balance. Those are donations, and this item is being put before you for two reasons. One is that we are looking, in the spirit of being taxpayer-friendly, not to look to tax dollars in this at first blush. This is a historical centennial that's to occur May 1st to the 6th. The Historical Committee has spent quite a bit of time in putting together a rough sketch of what that looks like, and they have a budget that they are looking at of approximately $50,000. Now, what's that money going for? There will be museum-like displays through the five days that this will take place in, on restoration efforts, the way we once were, and how this courthouse is used. Arts and craftsmanship, architecture. There are two prominent speakers from the University of Virginia in Chicago that are experts, so honorariums, speakers lodging, food, et cetera. Brochures and maps that have been identified to be done professionally. And we've also talked about having an iPad or iPhone synced technology that would walk people through this 100 days of tours, media marketing, and so on. So of that $50,000, there's approximately $10,000 from the courthouse foundation, and I would commend the Historical Committee for looking to identify sponsorships and private donations. The item before you tonight is to allocate the remainder of that budget balance from gaming revenues for the event, and then to ask for a separate trust and agency fund set up for the monitoring of those expenditures. So those would be my opening comments on this item.
I'll move it.
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion passes four to one. We will continually update the board as to progress, and you'll see that most likely in committee reports. Item 16, Chairman's Report, Community Action Agency Head Start Program. Just want to recognize those folks, they do great work. I had a chance to read for a classroom over on George Street, and anything from early childhood literacy, preschool, and then being a great community partner with different agencies regarding health and welfare. Those Head Start programs do great work. I'd also like to do something, if I may, Nia, is it okay to introduce you at this time? Is that okay? And I know this is not an agenda, but if I may, Nia Keye is our new jail alternative coordinator, if I have that title right. We did have a region meeting today. And as you may know, the law enforcement center that was built in 1987 to house 90, and has grown to a capacity of 234 today, has had this board really look at the capacity there, in terms of building and renovation. But we've also looked for alcohol diversionary programs. And one of the keys of this stool, so to speak, is to have those that should receive services for mental health treatment serviced otherwise. And so, we would like to welcome Nia on board, very happy to have you, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We hope you stay longer than six months.
Right. Item B, legislation impact, and I just categorize these very broadly. My hope and point isn't to get into a protracted discussion, that would be better recognized under an information item. But just to say that the Iowa Legislature, for good or ill, passed some significant pieces of legislation. And then the first one regards fireworks. And so, we have asked Planning and Zoning Director John Pellelo, Secondary Roser County Engineer Mark Nara, and the Sheriff's Office to give us some thoughts regarding any desire to create an ordinance or anything that would come before this county. And I was appreciative of Director Pellelo giving us some of what was learned today. If you'd like to address the board just informationally, please feel free on what you handed out today and may have learned just from a kind of an aerial overview.
First of all, I don't know if there's, obviously, I'm not an expert here on this topic. I don't know if there is one in the state at this point, to be honest with you. The legislation is still a little bit murky. There's two major components of the legislation. One is the display or the firing of the fireworks, and the other part is the sales. And the major thrust of the issue is, we can limit, or we can ban, the actual shooting of the fireworks, but we can't ban the sales. We do have leverage through other vehicles, including the zoning ordinances, to place limitations where those sales originate from, i.e. zoning district designations. What came out of the scenario is the fact that everyone is waiting for the missing component to date. That is a formal application process to be put into place. The State Farm Marshal's Office only has the capability of you registering by setting up an account to show your intention to apply, well short of issuing some ordinances so some local action can be taken. You're well aware that Sioux City has adopted ordinances. Sergeant Bluff is in the process, as well as some of our, many of our, the regions, not necessarily Woodbury County, but multi-counties were present at the meeting today to see what they want to do individually regarding ordinances. Pat confirmed with me by email today that we don't have anything up on our books regarding the topic of fireworks. Obviously, it hasn't been something that's been legally allowed for 80 years. So there's nothing to repeal. Some jurisdictions have that issue of, hey, if we want to adhere to the state law, we need some things we need to repeal from our existing ordinances on the sales side. We flat-out asked the question of the attorney providing the presentation today, and really, there's no downside to waiting and see how this flushes out the first year. I did raise the issue of, hey, if we had an applicant who wanted to do this in a new structure, should we permit it for the use, and could the grandfather process be used against us going forward? She felt that that was probably, although it might be a litigated issue, that we would be in pretty good shape in regard to defending, making that applicant adhere to a set of rules that may be adopted after that first year through. I'm not sure I'm even to a point where I'm ready to make a recommendation, other than sharing with you the comments we heard about waiting, giving this some time to flush out, at least the upcoming. I think it would be a mistake to try to rush through an ordinance adoption process where you would have to waive public readings to get the timeline and all those things. And it'd be worse to do it wrong than, I think, to wait and see what happens. Maybe some sellers will get away with some things this year, but we will see how that flushes out, and I think you'll be in a better position to make a decision either before the next season, which will be this winter around Christmas. We've got time to review and evaluate what happened during, from June 1st to just after the 4th of July. There's one more player in this list that I would like to see considered to be added. And I think we need some input from our fire districts, representatives from each of those districts, or someone representing them by consensus. This is not one, I think this will be one where zoning ordinances can react to your decisions. It's not, this is not intended to be, I think, part of a zoning ordinance, it'd be a standalone ordinance. I am of the perception that the county doesn't have a great deal of interest on regulating the usage to any significant degree. If I'm wrong with that, correct me. But maybe we should do some things in sales, so we don't have these types of either temporary or permanent structures popping up in county right-of-way or near significant areas that have high residential density. It just doesn't make sense. The logical places where we may allow, would want to allow them would be maybe highway commercial areas, general commercial areas where other sale, retail sales might be occurring, and make decisions on whether we want to allow temporary structures at all or permanent. I mean, there's a lot of things, but we don't know what things will be really covered the way we want to see them in the Fire Marshal's regulations. There's a whole permitting process there, they'll do the inspections, we're told, and they'll monitor that. I would only like to see something adopted that everyone's willing to enforce.
John, are you okay running point on this, so to speak, with these other entities? I mean, you mentioned the fire districts.
Sure, can be happy to do that.
Okay, and including these others. I appreciate you going out and getting this information for the board, and sharing that with us.
We would need some support from the county attorney's office in some regard, on how to approach this, once we know what their regs are, and obviously, their opinion as to, and approval would be of considerable value to the group.
And the other thing, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew, was reiterated at the Department head meeting, is our conservation parks, they're still not allowed. So just so everybody knows.
We provided you with the PowerPoint presentation, it came late in the day. We apologize for that, but the meeting was held late morning. If you read through that and have some questions, either email my office, and we'll try to get answers for you. I don't know where to take this next. Do you want this to come back as an additional informational item at a certain time? Or should we just wait and see how, we're only two meetings, probably two meetings before we're going to see where we are?
My preference would be if, unless a particular supervisor has an item to put forward, or there's additional information that you think needs to be had in a public forum, this, to me, meets the purposes. But if another supervisor says, no, I have a burning desire to put something forward, that's fine. I just thought this would be a good opportunity to briefly address.
There's one more opportunity to pull together some information. There's a conference in Davenport that I was going to attend anyway, this is on the topic. We'll see what our peer group's doing, what their intentions are, if it's a sit-and-wait, or, hey, we've adopted this. We'll provide you some information in that regard.
Supervisor Potabom?
And since Al Remsen's my hometown, I've heard this story for my entire life.
Yep.
But my only fear is you start driving down Highway 20, and you find a tent on each mile selling these things. And I just...
We're going to have the same issue probably with this that we've had with honey in the past.
Yep.
So...
And I know this thing is way too fast to do anything for this first go-around, June 1st through July 8th, or whatever it is. But then, like you said, I think we'll wait and see, and then see what we do after that.
Sure.
I don't want to rush and try to throw something together that isn't right either.
We may decide we don't want to do anything, we may decide we want to be proactive on some issues.
As far as the usage, John, but the incorporated areas have their rules. I don't think the county should.
Do we already have ordinances surrounding tent side road?
We do not have anything on temporary structures, nor do we have anything related to explosives. There's no place to plug this thing right now.
Fireworks, aren't you required to have a tax, sales tax permit?
I'm sure you would have that, as well as that permit from the state to do these things, which is tied to certain, at least some type of fire suppression, we hope. We don't, we don't know if they're going to get into setback issues.
Probably, there's nothing there yet, telling what the rules are.
That's right.
I would figure you have to get a business license to sell them, which means you get a tax permit number, because we do want the sales tax.
Our, just so you know, we've had one inquiry already in the Highway 20 corridor. I'm not going to get into specifics, because it's, but it's an issue where it'd be in an existing structure. It's in an area where it's in, in my mind, close proximity to occupied structures. But this isn't the shooting of the fireworks, this is just their sale. It's a general commercial zoned location, which seemed to be something we would look at approving anyway. I'm not aware of any ground swell here of dozens and dozens of these locations, but you don't know. When you read the legislation, and what's the classes of fireworks that are approved, this is just an upgrade from snaps and caps to bottle rockets, and kind of ground, what I would call ground fireworks. It's not the big displays, that's another category, and those are still not permitted in Iowa. I think part of this whole process is going to be information to the public, and I'm...
We make incremental steps toward freedom each year.
I know, but it's, I don't think this legislation is what... I don't think this legislation is what some of the general public perceives.
Thinks it is.
It is not the Wild West.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate all your work on this, and it's good for the... Good of the board. Item two is equity of the mental health levy. This came about as legislation, I believe, sent in file 504. And I include this in an update of the region meeting. We did look and make a recommendation that was supported by all three member counties to go to an equal levy of $17.58. And that's on a per capita basis. As you know, we had anticipated a reduction of approximately $633,000 within our budget this year. This equalizes so that Plymouth County, in particular, is paying the same as our taxpayers are. We will look to how we can both keep the low tax levy rate that has already been passed, as well as keep some stability so that we don't have to go down and up potentially in the future. But I think that that was a good piece of legislation, and we realized some benefit of that today.
And I think, you know, Jeremy and I are going to come back with a recommendation after these changes made as how to move forward so that we avoid, you know, a huge dip and spike in levy changes and trying to change our, you know, what... What we've already certified this year. You know, we want to avoid that. So we're going to come back with recommendations for the next week.
All right. And so that's a positive for Woodbury County, we feel, on the equalization. And item three, courthouse security. And this is just to, again, not open up, but just to say that, you know, there's an implication of House File 517. And I've asked, in coordination with county attorney's office, as well as knowing that there may be an attorney general's opinion, what implications are there for us as a county regarding the legislation that's passed? And just wanting to make sure that we're keeping within what we're supposed to be doing. And so that's something that I just wanted to let everybody know. It has an implication potentially for our county? Or maybe not otherwise, based on an impending ruling, so to speak? Is that a fair way to say it, VJ?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. And so if that's something that's in shared bank, we can make sure that we're comporting with whatever is required. And I appreciate that, and also appreciate what those folks do for us. Any other discussion or thoughts there? All right. Well, having dispensed with Chairman's Report, we're to item 17, Reports on Committee Meetings.
At a ship meeting, we didn't really discuss anything too pertinent, so...
But a good region meeting, as I was mentioning, and looked at transitional beds, you know, especially for Jackson Recovery. And they talked about some of the dynamics when there's substance abuse, as well as mental health issues. Really looking at the total budget and going forward. One of the things that that levy reduction is predicated on is keeping a flat budget. And if that's going to be the case, we... I think we need to look hard and fast at things like provider improvements in the future and really keeping that budget within range. So that was a...
Mr.?
Yes, Supervisor On?
Excuse me. The last region meeting, there was discussion, I heard, different supervisors from our neighboring counties disagreeing with our understanding that the county does set the levy rate. Was there any discussion of that today or any... Because it's troubling when this far into the process, there's still disagreement being voiced at public meetings.
Right. So today, the understanding was that the region board makes a... An ask of the different member counties and that those member counties are to generally follow that levy recommendation. The particular difficulty, as you may know, is the time window. It was 30 days after the governor signed the legislation, and Plymouth County stood by their position that they would not have had time to hold another public hearing and to recertify based on what they did early on. But I am appreciative Supervisor On, because I know that you, in the past, have raised that issue of Woodbury County were to break off and try to set its own levy. That we heard that it's the region that sets that. And there's been some discussion back and forth. So those are my thoughts. Any other?
Just waiting for your words to get to China.
Right, right. Any other thoughts on committee meetings or on that particular item? Item 18 relates to citizen concerns. 19, board concerns.
I was going to ask how the installation process of the sit-stand stations is going. Is it going smoothly?
Yes, it is. We've had quite a few... Melissa Thomas is on her way up to the podium. And at the department head meeting, we talked about some of the mats. We're still being looked at as to the most optimal product, but do you want to give a quick update?
Sure, Melissa Thomas with Human Resources. All of the sit-stands are here. The ones in the attorney's office have been installed, I believe. Don't hear anymore. And the other ones, building services are slowly distributing to the departments as they can. But they're all here in the county, so that's good.
Very good, thank you very much.
Very good, thanks.
Kind of an up and down report.
Well, with that Supervisor Raddick, we will adjourn. Safe travels Supervisor On?
Do you know what's going on?
Thank you.